Welcome everybody to this town hall meeting tonight, and I know it's been a short notice, but I'd like to thank everybody for coming and taking the time out of their busy schedules to be here tonight to hear what I consider, and I think everyone in this room is going to be very important information. First of all, I'd like to start by saying that the county last month, the form court passed a couple of ordinances. One, to be able to create a ballot issue to be able to put before you, and the second one was to actually have a ballot titled itself to go before you for sales tax, July the fourteenth, for one percent to get the hospital open back up again. What we need to discuss tonight, and I'm going to discuss about the sales tax issue, and then Frank Shutt from AmerisHealth will come up here and give you an overview of what his company is proposing, so everybody in here will know without a doubt when they leave tonight what they're offering. Because I know there's a lot of uncertainty out here in public right now, and I hear so many things, and I think meetings like this are important that we clear the air and everything taken care of. So, just to give you a start with last month, the form court passed an ordinance to establish a sales tax to be put on a ballot for July the fourteenth. What I want to tell you about that sales tax is that we're working right now, the county attorney and myself are working with AmerisHealth getting a lease agreement in place as we speak. I want to let you know that if you go and vote for this tax to get the hospital open, that the county will not be a pass through for this tax. All taxes come to the county and then they distribute them to the entities that they belong to, but we've made it very clear that we want to hold this company accountable. I think you want to hold this company accountable, and I know you want to hold me accountable for what we're doing. So, with that being said, what we're going to do is, we're putting in the language in our, in our lease agreement that will actually hold them accountable by saying we're not going to be a pass through for the tax. When the tax money is generated and comes to the county, the only way that AmerisHealth will receive one dime of the taxpayer dollars is if they come before us to present receipts to the county, to the county government, and then the county will review those and then reimburse them with that, with that money. There's also misconceptions out here that if they come, they're going to take this money and they're going to pack up and leave. There, again, we're putting safeguards in place where they can't take any money with them. If they don't bring receipts to us, that money will be in the county's coffers and they can't touch it. So, we're protecting you, the citizens, to make sure that we're doing this the best that we know how. I want to let you know that AmerisHealth will come up here and give you a proposal in a minute as far as what they're going to offer, and I hear people say, well, they're going to offer less than what was offered there before. I can tell you today, they are going to offer less initially than what they were offering before. There were things that were not profitable at the hospital, and there were things that were profitable, and when you're trying to start from the ground up, you need to focus on the things that you think you can at least break even on. So, that's what they're proposing to do, is to work on those issues and establish from the ground up, and as the business grows, and we hope it grows, then they will add to it. Will it be 400 employees there? Not today it won't, but I'm sure they would love to have six or seven hundred employees if the growth was there to accommodate that amount of employees, but they're not going to staff employees if they don't have the patience and the business there to take care of it. And that's, that's very important, that, that we make sure that they're doing that. They're going to have a seven-member board to be representing their hospital, and we're a seven-member board. There will be three members on that that are going to be county people that the form court and myself will have input on, to be able to choose those individuals and get them on there to represent the county's behalf, and they will have four of their own people from their company representing. So, we're going to hold them accountable, we're going to, we're going to put in an agreement that they have to come before the form court and give regulatory updates so that you, the citizen, know exactly what's going on. I think that we, we struggled, the hospital has been down now for almost a year, and I surely people are feeling the effects of it. I know that emergency services are feeling the effects big time, and I have a mother that's in a Broadway nursing home right now, and I know what effect it's been on my mother and on our family by not having a hospital here today, and we need that hospital here today. But I'm not here to say to you on whether we need it or not, we're here tonight to give you the facts and give you the information that you need to know so that you can go back, talk to your family members, and decide what's going to work best with you and your family. And at the end of the day, it may be that you say, "We don't need a hospital here," and you vote against that tax, but it's going to be you, the people, that decide. It needs to be that way, it's your, it's your community, and if you love your community like I know everybody does here, you wouldn't be here tonight. I feel like that we need to look at reinvesting back in our community, because the hospital is definitely a major piece of healthcare for our community, but when you look at the whole scope of it, and you've got city leaders here, state leaders here, and I know they'll agree with me, the bigger picture is, is part of our economic engine. So, that idea, I think we're going to see our county struggle without having a hospital here. So, I think it's very important that we look at this, consider this, and see if there's something that's doable. I hear people say, "Why don't you take that tax money, and instead of opening that hospital, why don't you build a new hospital?" So, the problem that you have there, and it sounds great, I would love for us to have a new hospital, but the problem you have there is that you're looking probably from start, beginning to design and build a hospital to completion, four to five years. I don't think that this county can afford to not have a hospital here for four or five years. And not only that, the tax, if it passes, it's not nearly enough money to build a new hospital. That tax would probably have to go for ten years or more to be able to pay for a hospital, and that's just to pay for it before you ever even get it open. So, we just, we just want to put the, put the information out here today and then allow you to decide what works best for you and your family. So, I'm going to, I'm going to bring up Frank Shutt with AmerisHealth, and he's going to lay out what their envision, their vision of a hospital will be, and then once he gets through with that, we want to be able to open this up to the public for any type of questions that you may have, because I want to make sure that when you walk out the door tonight, that you know without a doubt where this, where this is headed. And if you've got a question, don't walk out the door without asking it. So, thank you for your time, and Frank, please.
Well, good evening, I'm Frank Shutt with AmerisHealth. I probably had the opportunity to meet maybe half the folks in this room. And while I'm going over this tonight, please, I don't call it, I don't consider it interrupting me, if you've got a question that you want answered, or want me to explain something better, please feel free to do that at any time, that's not a problem with me. As, as the judge shared with you for the introduction, our company is based in Nashville. We, we specialize in rural hospitals, predominantly in the southeast. We're actually developing a pod duck as far as logistics, one in New Mexico. I'm going to be, I'm going to tell you right off the bat, if anybody in this room is batting a thousand in their career and their endeavors, stand up, because the point being, we have not been successful at every rural hospital. Rural hospitals are the most difficult healthcare line of business to be in this day and age. So, I've sadly been involved in hospital situations just like this in the past. So, we have been able to reopen hospitals, and we've been very successful in going in communities and doing replacement hospitals, and quite frankly, in startups, just pure area, rural areas where they never had a hospital. So, I just want to make that very clear. There's, I'll, later down the conversation, I'll give you some more local experiences that I've had in Arkansas, if you so wish, but I've been doing this, the Lord gave me, this gave me thirty-nine years, and I've spent thirty-five in rural healthcare, either in this space and being involved from trying to do a reopening to getting the citizens interested, to physician recruitment, and every now and then I even play what I call hospital ministry. That is a tough job, so I have been on both sides of the fence. Sam Lewis is the founder of our company, he was born and raised across the river. Sam is, our company is in Nashville. I'm the road warrior, so I live in Florida, so it doesn't matter, because I'm on the road anyway, so wherever I got to be, that's, that's fine. But Sam and I have been together since nineteen eighty-two, not consecutively, I mean, I've gone and done other healthcare business as well as he has, but we've always done, stayed together. Between us alone, I believe we have been involved in twenty-seven hospitals since nineteen eighty-two. Like I said, sometimes we're just brought in to do turnarounds, where they're owned by a city, I've been involved owned by county, private, you know, people that have owned them, so we, we've had all that different experiences. One, what I want to share with you, same situation, and this is a place called Phoenix City, Alabama, it's right on the state line with Columbus, Georgia, so very similar situation, they got the river. The city of, Phoenix City owned the hospital, four-hundred-bed hospital, built out the same timeframe as the one here on what was called Hill-Burton Funds, federal funds to help hospitals get built. And so, the city went ahead and, you know, had this hospital going, and just one day it just, you know, just didn't work out, and, you know, the administration had to save their closing, and the good news, if you want to call it that, yes, they went for three-plus years without a hospital, but I can say that we built them a brand-new seventy-five bed hospital that is doing quite well today. The big group of orthopedic surgeons were the biggest utilizers of the hospital, and so they now own that facility. So, it's comparable in that, you know, as far as both the size and population and the fact that, you know, the hospital just closed overnight, if it was, you know, that the community didn't have an opportunity to, to know about it. But, well, we're proposing, let me tell you that, that's probably what you want to hear from them, again, any questions along the way. When the hos, what we envision is, you're going to, we need to take baby steps, okay, as far as growth. We cannot afford to overstaff it, but we are, for your safeguards is either patients or your families, all our hospitals are what's called joint credited, commissioned, accredited. That is, in our language, good housekeeping seals approved. That is a volunteer program, while the insurance companies do require it, but it is a very, it's a very tedious process, and you don't just, it's well beyond what we call the minimum licensing standards for hospitals. So, it's, in fact, it's, we are here this evening when my counterparts is in Jackson, Tennessee, where we're opening a geriatric behavioral program, we just did, and those folks are over there this week. So, I want to emphasize that now, that the quality of care is, is going to, I mean, that's just, that's just the way we do business. I mean, it's just imperative, if you're going to have happy physicians that are going to utilize the hospital, and patients, and their families that are going to bring them there, it's just good business sense, I guess is the way I look at it. So, we will initially plan to reopen, of course, the emergency room, okay? And I believe that was about ten days, but anyway, the point being, we'll have the emergency room. Thus far, I'm very pleased with, with the multiple conversations I've had with the physicians, both individually and as a group on numerous occasions since last winter, in November, December. And we're hoping to staff it physician-wise with local trained ER physicians that are interested in that thing. So, there's, you know, we don't, if we can, we, we don't like, nothing against using national companies, but if you can use physicians that are in the community that want to support their hospital, and the people within the community know those doctors, it just another makes a whole lot of sense. We will open initially two of the operating rooms. If the need exists to open a third, that's great, but we're not going to staff it or equip it, you know, just to be sitting there like this, you know, twirling your thumbs. We'll open the respiratory department, lab, physical therapy. I'm in negotiations with Rehab Care, they were the company that had the third floor of physical rehab, and I'm in communication with Dr. Denton, and hopefully he will want to come home. He's been dropped from Cordova to Conway during the week right now. Let's see, what other services? The one that, that I cannot, until we're a little further along, we really would like to do the OB again. Bless his heart, Dr. Chin, that, all the physicians are to be thanked, but that for me, I don't know how he did it, they're twenty-four-seven delivering babies, but I've got a good relationship with Dr. Chin, and I'm sincere, you're really hoping that we can redo that. Why, why do I say, why am I not a hundred percent or hesitant? You've got to find another OB for beginners, you know, I mean, you just can't count on one doctor to provide that service, and it's, it's, it's very labor-intensive, et cetera, so, but that is one that I'll say maybe of the second phase. Patient RNs, all right, the way we staff our hospitals, and again, we're meeting that top level of joint commission standards, is we staff it in increments of eight beds, okay? So, let's say that means you're going to have one RN, and one LPN, and one nurse aide for eight beds, eight patients. So, we will start, open day one with the services I've laid out, and we will open day one with eight patients. If at ten o'clock at night, I get a call from whoever's the administrator, or the nursing director, or whoever, Frank, guess what? We've got ten patients, we will then in those, go ahead and add that additional staff. There's, makes no sense for us to just have folks standing around, you know, that, that there's not enough work for. And at this point, I'm going to tell you how much we are bringing to the, to the table, if you, if you would, if, if everything works out. Our investors are going to put in fourteen million dollars. If anybody tells you they can reopen a hospital for much less than that, they're not, they haven't experienced rural hospitals. And now, what is that, what is that going to be useful? Well, there's going to, we will have to start hiring people, I mean, right after July fourteenth, as far as, you know, the tax referendum. We, historically, you try, we, if, when we have more time in our, in our favor, we actually usually hire our hospital CEO twelve months before we open the doors. We hire our chief nursing officer about ten months before we open the doors, and probably one of the most critical ones nowadays is who is going to run that IT system, the information technology, and getting that billing system, you know, up and running. So, we will be going, I'll, going through a lot of cash just on pre-opening, on staffing, on updated supplies, the insurance carriers that we'll have to be negotiating with. And from the day the doors would open, those of you that are former hospital employees well know, and others in the room, and physicians, we probably won't see our first check from Medicare if we're lucky for six to nine months. So, and that's just, you know, and hopefully Medicare will be a little more timeframe with us, but, you know, with the Medicare population, we'll be taking care of everybody, you know, but it's going to be, we realize it's going to be quite a, quite a few months down the road before we see, you know, our first check back. Now, just ask me anytime, and I apologize if I, if I, I tried to stay, I'll sink, but here, one question that's been raised that comes up. The hospital closed on January seventh, two thousand fourteen, okay? Customarily, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, September, I'm sorry. Last, I'm sorry. I can't do what, what the elected officials do, because I've been doing world with the last forty-eight hours, and I'm already, but anyway, of meetings, but anyway. So, this September seventh will mark three hundred and sixty-five days, one year. The customary state licensing standards, any state, not just Arkansas, and with Medicare and this hospital in Arkansas falls under what we call the Region Five, Dallas Region of Medicare, that's who you report to and deal with, and you never get anybody on the phone to answer. But, so, because of my prior life, if you would, and work in Arkansas, I had a good relationship with the state director licensure and the deputy director in Little Rock. I've already visited those ladies. They're all building eight, they'll do whatever to get the hospital reopened on the up and up from state licensure, and I've given them enough written documentation to date that they've already said, "We will work with you and give you," at my request, I said, "December first." So, that's, so I want to clarify from, you know, if we were able to open September seventh, that'd be great, but the fuse, time fuse is just so short that I'm just grateful that I've got us till December first. So, I want to clarify that, that question. It is possible I may call, her name's Connie Milton, the deputy director, I may call Connie tomorrow and see if she'll give me till December thirty-first. I don't know, but, you know, just, just to try to clarify, right now, December first is what is agreed upon with the state licensure people and myself. And anything earlier than that is really getting tough, based on what I've been explaining, I hope that I've been explaining to you. As the judge said, and in fact, I, when we first met, because not quite the same, but another state and the tax, people's tax money, same thing. I don't ever want to have a check come directly to us, it needs to be, goes, that's the only way we're even going to come here. I mean, you can, I'm not placating, I'm not just saying that, that is the only way that we would come here, is that the county treasurer, or finance officer, whatever the right department is for, you know, for the county, all that money comes to them, and our hospital CEO, administration, or our business office person, whatever, you know, and I, we won't go every week, you know, here's an, here's an invoice, can we have a check? I mean, we'll, you know, take several, you know, at one time, once, whatever we work out, but, I mean, we will give them the documentation of the, either, you know, we purchased a piece of equipment, or, and we have not worked out specifics, but I'll give you a good example of what, let's say we need to, let's say we've got to recruit a second OB gen, since I've started out in Stevens. We would hope that, you know, that we would, if we could give, show the documentation of the plane, that, let's say they're in North Carolina, and I have to, we have to fly the physician, he's got a spouse, we have to fly him here, you know, and put him up for the weekend, and then do what we call an income guarantee. I'm not in favor of salary positions, no disrespect to, that's just Frank's philosophy, but we call income guarantee, where they, they generate their revenue and we make up the shortfall. But, so, but nothing at all did we ever ask, nor will we, that we haven't gotten the documentation. Let's say at the end of five years, and, you know, I've, I've got a dream for all of us, by the way, that at the end of five years, we will be talking about a new facility, okay? Whatever healthcare is at that time, you know, as far as how many hospital beds and services and the healthcare system at the time, but, I mean, if there's a piece of equipment, let's just say an X-ray machine, that you know of D one already, I mean, that is your piece of equipment as taxpayers. I mean, we cannot walk out of here with anything that, that comes from, you know, from the sales tax whatsoever. You know, we've, another thing that we philosophically, and I don't know, I can't see very well, I don't know if my friend Dr. Roger Cullen's out, out here yet, but he's from Osceola, so Dr. Cullen, for those of you who've known, has been there practicing a long time, and he knows me well, and he graciously is trying to see the last patient to come down here and speak to you as well, if that's okay, Judge. And, but, point being, we are, our philosophy on, as far as patients and physicians are the phone. When old Frank walks into a hospital for the first time after meeting the employees and the directors, and I sit down for the very first time with that medical staff, with all sincerity, out of my heart, every place I go, I tell them indirectly, they're paying my paycheck. I mean, I wasn't smart enough to go to medical school, so I've never admitted a patient, never wear'd a, a blood gas or anything else, and so, if you, if a hospital administration does not have a good working relationship with your medical staff, you're, you're in trouble, especially in a rural hospital where, this would be fortunate, you've got a good number of physicians that are still here, they may be displaced, so to speak, and have them go here, there, and yonder right now, but this is pretty impressive from, you know, my experience as far, I mean, I've been involved where we started, bought an old hospital north of Dallas, Georgia, and it was three doctors, and by the end of ten years, we had a hundred and thirty-five doctors on staff, and it was a fifty-bed hospital, but, I mean, so that's very encouraging here, from our, you know, perspective of, you know, for vast array of services, as was the number of physicians that, you know, are still, still here in town, wanting, or, you know, wanting to come back to the hospital. So, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, this question is for Judge Willis, based on the two of your conversations. It's more a mechanical question, an understanding of the tax, in the sense that the amount of the tax, how long the tax is going to last, more importantly, we had to vote to repeal it. We were sitting there saying that you're going to control the money, but the way most laws work, if the tax is being levied to administer in the hospital, if you decide not to pay, or don't think the expenses are legitimate, how does that work? Because everybody's tax dollars are going in the pool to fund the hospital, and then what kind of expenses does this tax pay if approved to operate the hospital? Are we just underwriting the hospital for every bill that they submit, or is it a list of certain expenses? Can somebody kind of articulate a picture of how this process works, and most importantly, the why behind it?
Sure. So, can you tell up here, our county attorney, Joe Rogers, I think he can tell up here and answer that matter that I can't. I know there will be some sort of question asked, and that's the reason, that's the reason why we asked Joe to be here.
Well, the, the tax, as it appears on your ballot, will be for the purposes of reopening, repairing, improving, renovating, operating, maintaining the hospital in Cleveland, Tennessee. That's the purposes that the tax could be used for. There will be certain things, in all likelihood, under our lease agreement, where the county will pay, we may actually employ, like some of the maintenance staff, we may incur, pay some insurance costs, certain things that the county may pay directly, then there are certain things, like we can lease equipment, we can buy equipment, there are certain things that, that are going to have to be the expense of the less fee. It won't be something that we can reimburse them for, so it's not like they're going to take every penny of this money and not have to expend any of their own money, even, even when they get up and get going. We're not going to be probably paying for salaries of nurses, because they're direct employees. There are certain things that the county can do and cannot do, and we're here to assure you that if this tax passes, that, that the county will ensure that the money that's collected from the taxpayer for some of this tax will be used solely for the purposes that's set forth in the ballot that you'll be voting for. And if, for instance, there is a provision in the ballot that if, for some reason, this hospital should close, like happened before, the tax doesn't go on. There's provision in that the court, the court will take the necessary steps, steps to stop the tax, if it's not being operated. So, it won't be a situation where they come in and start going for two years, and then all of a sudden, hey, it's not legal to do this, and we're walking away, if that should happen, then the tax will be, will do the, take the necessary steps to terminate the tax.
Is there a dig on the tax?
Five years.
You said that, so you would take necessary steps, what are those steps? Because when they, wait, before, the last time we passed the tax, it appeared that the court and court wanted to keep the revenue for whatever reason, and then we got an injunction, and we got letters from the state saying not to collect the tax. So, what steps specifically, if we're going to be in there if the hospital closes, that they won't, that they will not collect the tax? that they won't, that they will not collect the tax?
Tax, the law that calls for the enactment of a sales tax in Arkansas cements that if there's no need to collect the tax anymore, the law that says the tax will not be collected if the hospital is closed and not in operation, then the court will submit it back to the people to terminate the tax. That's the only way you can repeal the tax in Arkansas, is to submit it back to the voters. Is that sort of the law there, that's what you're doing?
What would, what would be done when that was collected in the interim?
The revenue that was collected in the interim that had not been expended could only be used for the purposes that I'm talking about here, operating that hospital. Couldn't be used for any other purpose. And if it, if it closed and you had a surplus, and what you like to do, what usually happens in those situations, you have a surplus, you go in and you submit a petition to a court, and the court directs you how you disperse the surplus. It doesn't just go automatically go into the county coffers, it just, it can't be used for that purpose.
Do you envision needing to extend the tax?
Uh, we don't anticipate, it's, it's, it's part of five-year tax. We don't anticipate, we, we enact the tax.
Joe, they said they're going to invest 14 million dollars. And what I understand, this tax will generate something over a five-year period, 13 million. Is that right?
That's what it's estimated.
Yeah. Now, can that money be used, the 14 million they're going to put in, how that, their investors are going to put in, can this money be used to pay them back their 14 million?
It depends on what they use their 14 million for. You know, there are certain things, like if they go out and buy a piece of equipment for the hospital, then that's, that's going to be something we can reimburse them for, but at that point in time, we're going to owe them equipment.
Well, my question was, can you use that money to pay them back the 14 million that they're putting in? Like they, they say, okay, we want, once it generates 14 million dollars, we want our 14 million back. Can that money be used for that?
No.
Question I have, the part the tax will pay for at this point, it's not fixed on exactly what I was asking.
Well, it's, it's, it's a broad category, and it, and it refers to, uh, cost of reopening, repairing, improving, renovating, equipping, operating, and maintaining the hospital. Now, that's pretty broad, and I couldn't tell you explicitly what it could be, but it could be for things such as equipment, leasing equipment, buying equipment, utility costs, insurance costs, maintenance costs, et cetera.
What about the scenario where he was talking about an income guarantee and hiring a doctor?
There, if it is a purpose for which the state allows us to spend money that we collect, it could be utilized to pay the expenses of regular operating.
Could it be utilized to substitute, subs- subsidize a doctor's salary?
Well, the recruitment, it could be used.
Talking ongoing employment?
No, I don't think so.
You don't think, or you don't?
Believe me, I don't believe it can, no. We're not going to be paying employees, they're not going to be the county's employees.
Yes, sir.
Following on from what this gentleman said, and really directed to you, Judge Willis. I saw the court and court in action when, last year, when we were trying to get the ballot placed. And there were some naysayers from the court and court. So what's going to happen if Ameris present a bill or an invoice and say, well, we want this, we need this, or this? Is it going to be bogged down, and does it have the chance of not being passed at the court and court level? So the expense actually gets denied?
If it falls within the scope of what Joe Rogers just said a few minutes ago, the court and court won't have any reason to deny it.
But they can.
They have the basis. Well, I mean, that's good, I, I agree with you, they could, but...
Judge, let me, let me say this to the court and court. And I'm just speaking for one member. I support the, the hospital, I support what Frank is doing, I support what you're doing. And you got a yes vote with me on this. And I believe that the other court and court members would, and I think it's going to be unanimous.
It was unanimous, it was unanimous when it was passed.
Justice Bass me at the moment.
It was unanimous that they're supporting these efforts. I'm telling everybody today, and I will tell you, PC people out here, can we guarantee you today that these people are going to be successful? Absolutely not. But we know what we have going on today is not successful. Yes, sir.
I mean, Ameris has made it perfectly clear, this whole thing is due, the sales tax has not passed. What requirements have we placed on Ameris to ensure this community that 14 million dollars is set? Investors have already raised the funds, they presented their financials for the last three to five years, approved to the citizens of Creighton County that they're sound, stable, they've got the reserves to do what they say they can do. So do we have an accountant looking at all this data to make sure that it's, both sides have been vetted? Is what I'm asking.
Well, from a legal standpoint, there will be a, we're in the process of negotiating a lease agreement. It will be, of course, it'll have to be negotiated, so the terms will set, the payer approved also. But the lease will spell out in detail the obligations of the county, the obligations of Ameris, and who will do what, and the resources that will be necessary to do those things. They'll all be spelled out in the lease agreement.
Well, my question is, where do we have the documentation right now to show the 14 million is in place?
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to direct that to...
Well, I'm going to be very candid, now, if the tax doesn't pass, we're not coming to town. So I don't feel an obligation, I'm not being disrespectful, but until we, until we've got a, a lease in place, I, there's no need for us to have, I don't feel that to say, I've got 14 million sitting in my account.
That does seem a little odd that you're asking us to go on with pure faith then, that there's no business concept being presented that can assure the citizens that your financial strength is there.
But I think, as Counselor is trying to say, he's going to have this lease document in place, and hopefully, the terms will be amenable to both parties that we can get this signed, you know, before the tax.
We, we, it's our intention to have a lease negotiated with a, with a obligation on both parties' side to sign that these conditions following the passage of the tax, and also some items that are going on in the bankruptcy court, you know, concerning Creighton Hospital and such. If I can finish one aspect of that then, since the lease is the critical component. The minute you have it drafted, signed, and sealed, you'll probably have an entire lease in the deep end time so we can all read it. We'd be glad for that. Will it also be submitted to the, to the court and court, that will be executed by the county judge? Well, I say, I want everybody to have a chance to read it, so.
We want everybody to know it. That's one thing, we're not hiding information from anybody, we want everybody to know that. And that's a good point. We definitely want that.
If it's executed before the vote?
Yes. It's what we're working on right now, to have a signed lease agreement before that vote takes place.
Very nice to hear that, to look at, at this thing, whether it might do this or it might do that, might.
And I agree, I, I agree with you, but the problem that we're dealing with right now is there's so many moving pieces with that puzzle, and a bankruptcy still makes a part of it? That has a lot of logic, and until it goes a loop, the picture doesn't really get clearer.
Well, if something is wrong, I'd say something, I mean, it would not make much difference.
Well, that's, that's what I was saying earlier, that we have now gotten an extension until the seven percy.
Can I ask one question? To keep addressing this lease and understanding having it in place and all of that. And the county will sign this lease, will Ameris sign this lease, or will a subsidiary of Ameris sign this lease?
We will be establishing a LLC that each of our hospitals stand on its, I call them, side. So it is not, Ameris is the management company. So we will create, let's call it, just for conversation, I call it the South Community Hospital LLC. There will be those officers of that corporation that will be signing the lease agreement.
But the net worth or value of Ameris does not guarantee this lease?
No, the, the LLC will.
The LLC, which is a subsidiary corporation of some type, not Ameris.
Well, it's not subsidiary, it'll be a created corporation there.
Will it have net worth?
14 million.
Oh, then the investors?
That, no, that would be the 14 million, that's pretty strong, I think.
But Ameris is not obligated over this lease.
As the manager did.
Following on from Mo Johnson's comment, and this gentleman's comment, two, two points. Has the county done due diligence with regards to Ameris? He asked whether the lease would be publicly available. And my follow-on from that would be, what about monthly accounting? Is that going to be public, public, excuse me, publicly available?
That will be, there will be in the lease, there'll be a requirement of a monthly accounting, there will be a requirement of a yearly audit of financial statement at the end of the year. Those matters will go to the county, as county records, they'll be public records.
Which, which is something we never got before.
Right, and, and totally understand.
We were, our lease agreements that we had prior to this stated very clearly that me as the county judge was supposed to receive financials on a monthly basis. I never received one, period. I asked one month after month after month, I never got them. These are things that were wrong before that we're trying to get right. Is this perfect? No, it's not perfect, but we're trying to do the best we can to cover and make sure we're protecting everybody.
I totally understand what you're saying, and, and you're absolutely right. Yeah, in the, since 2005, it's been, to be blunt, it's been screwed up. Last 22 months, you made the comment that you've been trying to get financials, and you've never saw them. Then I would actually put the comment out there that, I understand what you're saying. But if you were given the financials that were being prepared by, for example, the CFO, you wouldn't have known any different. And that's not a reflection on you, Judge Willis.
I agree.
But this money that you're asking us to, to pass, and I hope it does pass, as you know, I was in avid support for it last year. But if this is going to be such an open and clear process, then I think everybody needs to see what's going out there. And certain things perhaps need to be moved away. Judge Rogers said, you know, it'll be independent of the audited. And I think we need to find, you know, a firm of auditors away from the county, even away from the state, you know, a national firm. It's got to be clear. But like I, I said just now, asked just now, has the county or will the county do due diligence with regards to Ameris? And I'm a little bit concerned to hear now, it's going to be a standalone corporation that's, you know, and don't get me wrong, 14 million is a sizable chunk of money, but it don't take long for 14 million dollars to run out. And we're only putting 5 million, or half a million dollars in a month. The two doesn't really add up, and once their 14 million's gone, and, you know, it didn't help last time, half a million's not a huge amount of money.
Well, I'm not going to throw stones, I mean, the hospital that was here was a standalone, okay? So, I mean, most hospitals are, each hospital has their own accounting, their own tax ID number. I mean, that's, that's pretty much common with hospitals in this day and age. I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm going to say 14 million dollars is, is going to get, get this hospital going. Like I said again, we realize it's going to be quite a while before we get that first Medicaid check or insurance check. And that's why we don't, if we, if we do this, we don't want to be undercapitalized and opening the doors.
I guess that's where I'm going then. Are you going to put in, you put for, the hospital opens September 7th.
December 1st.
All right, December 1st. You come along, you put 14 million dollars in, the county puts in its first half million dollars. That's 14 and a half million dollars. That's just, you know, golden situation. Your 14 million goes to buy equipment, it provides doctors, it provides staff initially. But half a million dollars a month isn't going to continue the staffing. It isn't going to continue, you know, how much is it, 100, 100 grand a month just to keep the lights on as it is at the moment? So what are you going to put in after that 14 million before you get your first Medicaid check?
Oh, you're still going to have some money between now and, and month nine, if we say, say between December 1st and late July 2016. I mean, you're still, you're not going to burn through, you're not going to burn through that 14 million that fast. I mean, there's, that's quite part of it, is reserves, I mean.
Let me ask you a question along that line. So you've got 14 million dollars, you've got investors. They're investing because they expect a return from investment.
That's right.
You, you've put together a model that says that 14 million dollars is going to carry us X distance, we need a subsidy in form of a tax in order to right the ship and get the ship profitable so that your investors actually get their return on their investments. Say you're wrong, because we all invested incorrectly in our lifetime. If you're wrong, and in year three, or year four, or year five, you go, you know what? Investors, this is not, it was, it was a great try, it's not profitable under our model either. So at some point, you can pull the plug. What does the lease address in terms of them saying, well, it's not profitable, we gave it a shot, we're out of our 14 million, your tax is not enough to subsidize our costs in operating? What, can they just say hello, goodbye? How does that work in your lease agreement?
Well, the lease agreement will obviously have your typical, it'd be hard to do what they're required to do on a lease agreement. If they fail to, to not do those things on a lease agreement, then it's going to be terminated.
How, how long is the lease?
Lease will, that is, that should have to be negotiated, we anticipate 20, 25 years.
But is there an out?
There will be some clawback.
Pardon?
There will be some clawback, they didn't, the lease.
Sorry?
Well, what are you going to clawback from? A standalone company that probably doesn't have a huge amount of money or?
That is nothing.
You got points on that, you're that concerned?
Yeah, you got points on that. You got me here, I'm talking to you. I'm sorry.
Give them a break, please, you don't like.
I'll give them a better question. You have 14 million that you want to put into the rest in the healthcare in Creighton County.
Where do you envision your retirement investment is going to come from if we move our demographics and the way the government pays Medicare?
You know, actually, today, you know, I said, I don't have a crystal ball in reimbursement, but Arkansas Medicaid is the most well-paying one that I'm, I'm working with out of five states right now. I mean, Medicaid and, you know, with the, with the extended plan, or to option, it's, it's very, very different positions in healthcare providers and hospitals right now. I mean, we, we know exactly what Medicare's going to pay us for, an appendix, or, or somebody that's admitted respiratory. We've got all the historical data of what you had before from, for each of the doctors, for the admissions. I mean, so it's, I mean, we've got all that data, that's, that's how we came up to the, you know, to where we are this evening.
Ryan?
My next question was, by the way, I did want to say from the emergency medical services, hospital closing has definitely caused lives in this town, absolutely 100%. So I could say that. My question is, farthest those through, and Ameris comes in, are they coming in with their own CEO and their own director of nursing? Are they going to, I do agree with hiring the local physicians, but... Are they going to, I do agree with hiring the local physicians, but it seems like to me that before we had misuse of funds, I guess you would say, is what I heard, that caused part of the broken. So my question is, is your company going to come in with a new C E O, new director of nursing yourself, or are you going to hire that?
Let's start with C E O. We have no, if you ask me today, I don't have a furthest clue who we would hire as the C E O today. We're going to, we usually interview about ten candidates, I'll tell you this much. They, you know, and I'm sure it's nothing different than the past, but if it is, it won't be, but we do require our C E O to decide the county or the hospitals, so that means that I can get them, just like my philosophy about hospital management and the physicians, whoever we hire as that C E O is going to have that same philosophy, not only with the community, with the patients, people in this room, their loved ones, it's also going to be imperative that they have that philosophy with the physicians there. We are in this, we're all in this together, you know, with the way the healthcare system. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm just, that's just the way I, we believe in, we've been successful that way. Now, to answer your next question, okay, I've probably got, in chance, I've probably got a hundred and twenty, I don't know, two hundred, she's showing, I agree. You know, former employees, they're, you know, they're still interested. Just like I said a little while ago, why would we go and recruit the emergency room group when there's local physicians that have an interest, that have that expertise? Why would I go hire some of the senior clinical staff from outside if they, if they, they still want to come back home, and if they, you know, if they, everybody's going to have to go through an interview process, and it's not going to be, oh, I was friends with so-and-so, so I might have a job, so, nothing more would please me. I probably have met with six of the clinical directors already, you know, that, that are department heads, and, I mean, it, we have, it's not like we got a, you know, a bunch of folks out there that we want to just mishmash and bring the whole community here. The people that are here that were here, that's great. I, I want, does that answer your question, Chris?
I think everybody here wants the hospital, and how you work it out, I don't think we have a whole lot to say in that. But one question I've got, we've got a huge operation over here, a huge building, we're going to open the emergency rooms, two operating rooms, eight beds, and the lab and facility to support those. Who is going to be responsible for the maintenance, the utilities, and the insurance on the remaining part of the property? You will?
Yeah, and I, that's why I was saying, I, nothing pleases me more than we find more services to.
You're trying to fill the occupancy of our floor as we speak, is that correct? He thinks he's got the same folks that were here before to occupy the whole third floor. So you're going to have the majority of that hospital being utilized by somebody?
We currently have a personal property tax for the hospital, do we not? What would that money go towards?
You talking about a village?
Yes.
Four mill?
The village will be, it will be terminated at some point in time, and we don't, we're trying to, that mill goes back to nineteen forty-seven, and so we've been searching through the old county records, trying to find out how it originated. If, if it was originated without a vote of the people, which sometimes they can be, then it can be terminated by the court. But the, the Ameris and their subsidiary, they're not going to be requesting any of that money for that bill, so it's going to be, we're going to put it on the key, we have to, we're putting it on the ballot, terminate the tax, or if you're allowed to by law, what's happened in the past, what groups have been, or can be terminated.
Where is the village that's being collected now?
That's what, I'm going to tell you that right now, Troy. The village is being collected right now, if you look on your tax, tax statement you paid a year behind, so the money that's being collected right now is for two thousand and fourteen. That money that's being used, or being collected today is being used to pay the utility bill at the hospital, it's used to pay these maintenance workers that are here right now, and it's used to pay the insurance on the buildings. Right now, those things are running right at seventy thousand dollars. We were up around a hundred thousand dollars a month because we had security, and, and I'm thankful for the sheriff's department, I'm thankful for the mayor of the city of West Memphis for helping us out with the security, and we eliminated the security, and between the city of West Memphis and the sheriff's department, they're providing security there. So we knocked off thirty-two thousand dollars a month by allowing them to do what they're doing, and we're grateful for that. But still, these minimum things that we're talking about, they're still running about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars a month.
And the village is four million a year?
No, 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 that, 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 that taxes on the books right now generates about two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
A year?
A year. If you look on your tax statement, you're paying somewhere between five, ten, fifteen dollars. It's not enough money to, it's not enough money to pay for what we're doing, I can assure you that.
Pre-part question, it all has to do with revenue. Senator Eber might be interested in this first question. My understanding as a citizen of Tennessee, is one of the reasons that Arkansas has better reimbursement from government care is because of Obamacare, is that true? And do you foresee any diminishment of the revenue of some of my Tea Party friends getting?
I, I, if you're asking, that's what I said, I don't have a personal belief.
And the second question is, actually, I guess I only have two questions. And I think as much as the expense part of the former operations is critical and expenses are out of control, and I think your tax thing is couched in a language where you've got less oversight over expenses, but I was always taught that anyone that's worrying about the expenses more than the revenue coming in is going to get in trouble. So, and that's what happened over here, is they lost doctors and patients and patient revenue, they got, they weren't able to cover those expenses, they were too high in money. But what percentage of the patients they're taking care of, or that you perceive being taken care of, will be private pay or private insurance, like what I did in my place at Point, compared to the government reimbursement?
Insurance is probably looking at about, you know, if we, if all the insurance companies will let us participate, you're doing it for rural community or hospital about thirteen percent out of your, out of your reimbursement.
You said thirteen percent?
For pure insurance, blue cross was that.
So actually, what you're doing as Ameris is you're kind of in a rural community, and you're taking care of a huge percentage.
Of Medicaid.
Of people that, that people that need help.
And here's, here's, guess what, this is another novel idea, it's smart now, but at all our hospitals, we have either a social worker or a person that meets the state criteria to be a Medicaid counselor. So someone appears to heal, we render services, their bill's ten thousand dollars, whatever, they're admitted. And if they don't have, if they're not on the plan, we do think we have, it's a good investment that we hire this person that's certified, so that they can help that person get on, on the, you know, we'll call it the expanded Medicaid program. So I, from what I understand, that wasn't being fully done in the past, I'll just leave that way. So, I mean, this day and age, you really, one mechanism or another, with the hospital working with the patient, there's really the amount of, nothing available is really diminished significantly. I, I, Judge Johnson, if there was a question?
Go ahead, ma'am, I want Dr. Shetley to come up here in just a minute and speak, but go ahead, ma'am.
I just, I mean, you mentioned the board, how, what do you envision the roles and responsibilities of the seven in the board to be? Is it to be, is your oversight, is it, what is it to be? I think a lot of people would like to hear what.
Well, that's a great question, and, and those of you, I can't remember, was the hospital joint commission accredited?
Yeah.
All right, well, then they can verify what I, I hope they'll verify. Under those same guidelines that I called non-healthcare posts, the good housekeeping still approved a joint commission. There are very strict and defined responsibilities for a hospital board.
Okay, so you're going to hear those guys?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dr. Shetley?
Judge Paul DeSpecti, Dr. Cullum's back there, I'd like him to, Dr. Shetley, if you would.
I kind of feel like I'm preaching to the choir here, but I'd ask Judge Willis, when I was, no, at the meeting, I'd like to just say a couple of words. I was thinking on my way over here that between my dad and my brother Steve and myself, we've had privilege of sixty-six years of participating in healthcare of this, this city and this county, it's been an honor and a privilege on our part, and, you know, I'm speaking for my brother and serving for my dad. Whenever I hear the word tax, I, I get a hive, and so it's always just kind of a bad thing when you start talking about taxes. I, I was raised by a gentleman whose name's on the front of this building, who would drive us on family vacation, extra two-hundred and fifty miles out of way so we could register for a half-day medical meeting to write off part of our trip. On the other hand, I was also raised by my dad and my mother, who recognized the value of good healthcare, and we've always, always had good healthcare in this community. Over the last almost year, I've seen what sickens my stomach to see that the, a lot of the healthcare for this city and this county is being provided by emergency rooms across the river or in a hospital seventy miles away from here. That's not, that's not good healthcare. And if we don't, if we don't support the physicians that have stayed here, our primary care physicians, the internists and the primary care physicians, they've got to have the facilities in this county to provide healthcare to you and everybody that lives here, they just, right now, we don't have lab, we don't have M R Is, and all those things. So it's crucial to me for the, for this community and the healthiest community for its tax to pass and allow this hospital open. I, I, I hear all the concerns, and I, I share them with everybody here, how's it going to be different? You know, I, I believe in my heart that once we get that hospital open again, we, we will be so invested in it, now that we know how hard it is to keep it going, that we won't let that happen anymore. And anyway, I, I appreciate you, Tam, I just made a couple of words I wanted to say, thank you.
Where's Dr. Cullum back? Where'd he go on? Dr. Cullum, where are you?
Well, he's, he's sitting back there in the back. He knew I was going to say something, so he went.
If I understand correctly, they were roommates at Bendy.
Yeah, he was my questioner, I almost, I almost tried to, yeah.
Folks, this is Dr. Reggie Cullum. Dr. Cullum and I have known each other about twelve years, he's been practicing all his life in Oseola, and we're good friends, I graciously asked him if he'd take the time and come this evening and share what he thought, thinks, you know, the situation here, or thinks about me, or thinks about our company, or thinks how we did up there, whatever, it's his pleasure, I, I haven't prompted him to say, I have no idea what he wants to say anymore, but anyways, Dr. Cullum. Small-town medicines in truck, I'm not going to tell anybody in this room.
Yes.
Would you come up? Yes, yes. I, I honestly don't know why I'm here, except I'm a small-town guy, raised in Wilson, Arkansas, practiced medicine Oseola forty-two years, if I make it to the twenty-third this month. Small-town doctors, small-town hospitals, and a relationship between doctors and patients, the last place it exists is Kripton Hospital, Oseola Hospital, Blable, Wyand, Far City. And we're going to lose something if we lose that. We lose that compassion, you lose that contact with people, and your community will suffer if this hospital doesn't reopen. Your people are going to leave here, and they're going to go to doctors in Memphis. Your industry that would normally come here says, well, we've got to go to Memphis, or we've got to go to South Haven, or we've got to call your bill because we've got to have hospitals close enough to work with comp and all, but basically, it serves to you people and the older people, I'm an older guy. What about you Medicare patients, what about us older folks that can't get there? What happens when you have that heart attack and you're back over here, but where the high school is, and you've got to get to the emergency closest one, I guess, is at Methodist University or St. Francis, or further away than Kripton and Boynton? And I would say that you're going to have to pursue people that will not survive that trip. I, like I said, I don't know why I'm here, except I believe in the small hospital system and the primary service and the secondary service that you can pursue here, orthopedic surgery, general surgery, D and T surgery, ophthalmologic surgery, you might not ever have failed over here doing a heart, but you'll be, hey, you'll have people that can keep you alive till you get there. And it's yours, you're the voters, you're the people here in this community, you got to decide what you want and how bad you want it to keep this little hospital there. You're lucky, you got a bunch of doctors hanging around waiting, you know, to come back to work, that evidently enjoy it here. And of course, places as small as where I come from, one of these days, I'll be the best doctor in town, because I've been doing that. But anyway, I, I just here to promote small-town hospitals, small-town medicines. Where have the Phil Shetley's daddy and those people gone? Will they be a generation? If you don't keep this hospital open, I can tell you the answer to that, they won't do. But you all do what you want, it's in your hands.
Can we share with them the tax that, that the city and county may go?
Well, what, in this day, reimbursement, you need to fight with your politicians, and I'm not talking about these guys, I'm talking about Washington D.C., they just chop up reimbursement and make promises to you and to this hospital that they don't keep, they turn back and deny charges, and it is, you wouldn't believe the maze that twenty people have got there. This hospital's what got in trouble on this close today, not because you didn't have doctors and you didn't have service, you couldn't collect your money. Well, they passed a sales tax in our county to put money in operating the hospital, and our hospital's older than you are. The latest hospital construction in my county in nineteen seventy-six. And I know that some of these buildings here are older than that, and some are newer, so we deal with the same thing you do, we got old facilities. Can you refurbish? Well, first of all, you'll reopen, I think, because under the grandfather clause, it allows you to open with standards of construction that are less than if you built new. And the last time that I asked, and believe me, I had to ask somebody that knew, every bed that you build, construction cost is somewhere around a million bucks. So if you build an eighty-five-bed hospital, eighty-five million dollars, and that's no frills, that's construction, you got to put equipment in, you haven't done either. But I go back to you, what are you paying for, what are you able to pay for, and what are you going to get out of it? And to pay a sales tax, which I'm not a tax guy, if I don't pay one, I'd rather be a sales tax, because I pay as I go, I don't get guns, I'm able to fix things to pay one. Oh, so, again, that, let me sit down, it, it's up to you all, but I'm on the side of keeping small-town hospitals open and have a doctor, you can call by name, to know who your mother is, your daddy is, and your grandchildren are, like, there's something to say.
Anybody else have, go ahead, sir.
I think it comes down to the public, you and me, and the general resident of Kripton County, asking yourself, am I willing to take a leap of faith? I took a leap of faith once before, and it bit me in the butt. You know, there were some things that went on in the past that, beyond any of our control, the hospital closed down. But at this point in time, are you willing to gamble your life on that bridge being closed, or your loved one's life on that bridge being closed, or are you willing to take a leap of faith and put your trust in, in the county government, in Ameris, and, and get this hospital open? I, I realize there are a lot of, a lot of questions that people have, I've got a lot of questions, but am I willing to take a leap of faith, or am I willing to gamble my life trying to get across that bridge on one of those going to be closed? Nah, I would much rather take a gamble in Kripton County as sitting on that bridge. And that's just, you know, one person's form of view, yeah. And that's just, you know, one person's form of view, yeah.
I spoke with Judge Willis and the people from America. My name is Hudson Hall, I operate the Crittenon EMS ambulance service here in Crittenon County. I've been working in emergency medical services for fourteen years here, and, you know, I understand everybody has problems with taxes, it's an issue all across the country, but folks, this is, this is an issue of people's lives here. And Dr. Cullum spoke about small-town medicine and healthcare. I know almost every person in this room by your first name, and so do your doctors that were here. We, we're transporting people to these large hospitals in Memphis right now, and, and you know, you barely recognize the doctor because it changes every time that you go in the hospital there, and you don't know the nurses, and they don't know you, they're not from here, and, you know, it's a struggle. We, we fight a battle every day to get people to emergency healthcare. There are areas that we respond to, there are fifty-two miles from an emergency room right now, Crittenon being closed. I'm a champion for paramedics, and I believe that, in my mind, we're as good as emergency room doctors when it comes to taking care of somebody in the ambulance. That's just me. But I'm gonna tell you something, there's only so much that we can do to save your life. And technology and EMS is great, but, but time is everything. You know, we, we can't get you to a cardiac cath lab, we don't, we can't do a cath in an ambulance, we can't stop a stroke in an ambulance. All we have is time to get you there, and when you're looking at areas of this county that are fifty and forty miles, you know, that's on, on good conditions, it takes that long to get to the hospital, forty-five or fifty minutes. We're looking at a big issue coming up with this bridge being closed, and that's gonna present a unique challenge to us already. We're struggling every day to keep calls answered. I, I was sharing with him earlier in the meeting, I've been on an ambulance since yesterday morning at eight o'clock, around the clock. I put six-hundred-and-fifty miles of just one, my one ambulance, since eight o'clock yesterday morning, and answered twenty-three emergency calls, and that's one out of ten ambulances operates in this county. Yesterday, there were times, two different times during the day, that there was not an ambulance in this county to answer an emergency call. One of them was for a patient having chest pain. That's unacceptable, and the only solution, we are doing all we can, EMS mostly in this county is private-owned and private-funded, and, and we're struggling with the hospital being closed to keep our doors open. We can't certainly expand that care. The only option that we have to take care of the people in this county is to get behind this deal and, and let's work out the details and support it, because it could be anybody in this room. I promise you, I've seen it from somebody that's one month old to somebody that's a hundred years old. Everybody in this room is gonna have an emergency, and they're gonna need help. And if you can't get that help in a timely fashion, you're not gonna make it. You're gonna have a visit with Wolf Brothers Funeral Home or Roller Citizen Funeral Home, you're not gonna be around to do that. So this is, this is something that's extremely important to us, and, you guys, I just, I implore you, I see firsthand every day, Brian, the lifeline, said it best a minute ago, people have lost their lives because this hospital's been closed and we have not been able to get them to help. That could have been your mother, or your father, or your child, and, you know, there's no price that you can put on that. A one percent sales tax, is that really, I mean, that's your mother's life or your child's life, you know? I mean, I really encourage you all that are, that are conflicted about it and concerned about it, please just think about it from that perspective, and, you know, I thank you for the time to come up and speak to you, and, you know, let's get behind these guys, let's get this deal done, and let's get our hospital back open. Thank you.
Anybody else have any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just kinda like to elaborate on what Hudson said, he talks about time. The other gentleman said something about what happens when you have a heart attack. I think three or four different people have mentioned that OB-GYN is one of the last things on the priority list. This man right here takes twenty of his deliveries to other counties, and that's revenue that we would be losing. So I'm trying to understand why OB-GYN, be it emergency or be it revenue, is on the back burner behind physical, PT or any of those things.
I didn't say it was the last thing, I just...
Well, second phase, you did make, make a mention that it was not on the front roster.
I've gotta find Dr. Chin, somebody, he can't do twenty-four-seven.
He's doing it by himself, I mean. He's doing it by himself.
And Dr. Chin, you speak first, I've been down.
I haven't addressed yet, okay? I do bring deliveries outside of the county, but more importantly, we're also hemorrhaging deliveries to Shelby County. You've mentioned that, actually several things that are positive for revenue flow, income, positive revenue flow. Somebody who concentrates on expenses rather than income is bound to fail, and I do agree with that. If you're talking about Medicaid, the first thing you had said was that it pays quickly. That is true, we can wait months, and, you know, months and months for private payers, we can wait months and months for Medicare, but you do know that Medicaid, and I don't know what it does for the hospital, but for me, I submit my billing on Friday evening before midnight. On Sunday, after about six PM, I know how much I'm gonna get. On Friday, that following week, I have a deposit in my account. That's how quickly Medicaid in Arkansas turns around. I've been to Mississippi, and I have a friend, a colleague there, who was absolutely amazed at how much, for example, sterilization or a delivery pays in Arkansas compared to Mississippi. So while it's not a private payer, while it's not an immense amount of money, I've always known that this is a volume business in Arkansas, and it does pay enough for you to survive. Why that would be backburnered, I don't know. You had expressed, and I do appreciate you, Frank, you had expressed that, you know, this may be too much for me to handle as a single provider for obstetric and gynecologic care in Crittenon County. I'm providing Crittenon County's care in St. Francis County, forty-five miles away, and in Mississippi County, up in Blable Hospital, seventy-five miles away. I have done that, and you had said that this is one year in September, September first. That's not entirely accurate, because the hospital burned and was closed down for two months, June and July. We had one month retreat in August when the hospital reopened. Everybody rushed out, bought cards, because we have a tax, okay? Those cards have been turned in, repossessed, homes have been lost because of that false star, okay? So for one year, I have been driving to Mississippi County, St. Francis County, to deliver our Crittenon patients. With Brian and Hudson, you come right out and say, patients have died because we don't have a hospital. Unlike Dr. Cullum, I know exactly why I'm here. Not because I think that my presence is gonna, you know, save Crittenon County, but if I leave, there is a chance that people will die. Okay? It's gonna happen. I, I can't do that. This community has been good to me for the past decade, over a decade. They've been good to me. I come right out of residency, this is the only place I've been. I've been other places, I know what it's like. This is home for me now. I can't walk away from my patients. I, it just, if I do, there's a few of them that are gonna suffer. That's why I'm here. You can talk to people, they'll know that I'm plain-spoken, many people do not like me. But the fact remains that if they need something, I am still there. Right? I really think that bringing labor delivery online is a good thing. Pays quickly, pays a lot. Somebody had mentioned Obamacare, absolutely. Obamacare, if you, if you look at a simple delivery for me, pays a hundred-and-eighty-three percent of what Medicaid will pay. And it pays just as quickly, and it pays just as well. Same patient, identical patient, I can get a thousand dollars more for Obamacare delivery than I can for Medicaid. I've spoken prior to the hospital closing, and Dr. Wa has also, about getting patients signed up. Let's go ahead and sign up in the ER. Let's get these self-pays, just put them online, get it done. No. Why? Well, we're gonna lose our disproportionate use income from centers for Medicaid and Medicare. So we're gonna hold out for a little bit of charity, for a little bit of welfare, so that we can, you know, we can get a lump sum at the end of the year. If you had each one of these self-pays actually having insurance, having some kind of coverage that you signed them up for, we wouldn't be in this mess. So there are things that we can do to get around this. You've mentioned that I can't do this by myself. It is easier for me to be in this community than to run across the street. But also, at East Arkansas, there is an obstetric, a family practice provider that's obstetrically trained, that I think would be perfectly willing to come in and help. These things, we just have to sit down, you, and I, and Judge, and everybody, just sit down, we need to talk and say, hey, look, it looks like, you know, obstetrics might, might work.
About three-hundred-and-thirty, I think it's medical, it's coming down, I had the last full year, somewhere like that.
Well, I mean, I can say that, you know, face the St. Francis County, which isn't that much different from what we are, seven-four deliveries and men, you know, they are actually cannibalizing some bar deliveries, but see how many go there, see how many go to Memphis? If we can bring them all in town, see how many deliveries are being taken care of, provided their prenatal care over at East Arkansas Family Health. They would be more than happy to come here, I think. You know, I mean, we really have to look at the numbers here, it makes a difference. I really think it makes a difference. I don't think we should backburner, and this is absolutely self-serving, but I don't think that we can fail to try to bring obstetric services, gynecologic services online here earlier rather than later. And I mean, that's absolutely self-serving, but, you know, it's the truth.
Dr. Chin?
Yes, sir.
Is there a liability problem with only having one OB-GYN on call?
If there is, in two thousand and nine, I did it for my, by myself for nine months, it wasn't a liability concern there. I think it is a liability concern in terms of CORA, in terms of being able to feel the obstetric emergencies coming through the ER. So yes, the answer is yes. Again, we have another provider, we do have an obstetric-trained family practice doctor, but we've lost one. East Arkansas had signed one on, Dr. Muse, who shortly after she signed on at East Arkansas said, what, no OB services? I'm gonna get another job. She went across the river to St. Francis.
Does Methodist University have a attorney? Do they deliver?
Methodist University does not anymore. What they took from us from our ER, we can take from their.
Did you mention as far as the community health center just a second ago?
East Arkansas Family.
Yeah, yeah, I bet, I'm going to visit with Dr. Jones tomorrow morning also, so.
And she has some OB-trained family practice, you know, provider there.
And that's why I gave the example earlier, and I couldn't see you back there, so, but anyway, that's why I gave the example. What if we need to recruit another OB-GYN? That's, you know, what I said earlier, as far as the example, you know, usage of the, you know, of the tax money for us either way. In fact, there's a single minister in this room that was with me this morning, there were eighteen this morning, are there any? And this, I was, I'm preaching to all the doctors, and I'm not trying to placate you, Dr. Chin, but I did brag about you solely this morning, under the circumstances of the hospital, but yeah, you're right, I gotta keep working with you, and we gotta make it make sense, yeah.
Dr. Chin, what do you want you here? What do you want you here?
I have a plan.
We, we want you back if the citizens see fit to pass this tax, we want you back in this community, being a supporter with everybody here, and I know you will be.
And I mean, you realize that as time goes by, it's not, it's not me, it's every other provider that uses the case. If you're on that border and you say, hey, you know, I'm gonna retire in two years, you know, I'm not saying anybody is retiring, but, you know, that physician may just say, I'm packing it in and do something else, and we may buy attritions, start using our, our providers who have good roots in here, and it's gonna be nearly impossible to replace them.
Folks, you know what's so sad about this whole situation is that when the hospital closed September the seventh last year, you know, the county is a landlord of the property, and so the property reverted back to us, it wound up being a responsibility of the county. So we, we started just doing a lot of homework, trying to meet with every hospital that we possibly could, to see if there was an interest. We talked to every big player you can think of, and they would tell me what everybody in this room already knows, a hospital's needed in this community. You had that need there without a doubt. But then they would turn around and say, we have a pot of money to invest, and your community's not attracted to us. Every major hospital in the mid-south area said that same thing, you're not attracted to us. So with that being said, what do you do? You just throw your hands up and say, we're done? Or you keep fighting? I'm a fighter, I don't believe in, I don't believe in throwing the towel in and quitting. I love Crittenon County that much, but I think we keep fighting and keep fighting until we get what we know that we need in our community to take care of everybody in this room.
Do you have any other answers to how, what that is, what they mean? I used to work, and I think about some of the people I used to meet, you know, all these. And now that I work in a doctor's office in town, there is a lab. What part of your studies?
Day one. Yeah, I'm sorry.
What is your lab in this town?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, one of your outside labs, it's not where the other labs is, it's just like, doctors, patients, I don't know.
Yes, sir. With the radiology department being day one as well?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Tracy.
What do you? Most everybody knows me, and someone not managing immediate care is disturbing to all of us. I'm gonna vote for this tax, good or bad, I'm gonna vote for it. I've got approximately eighty-three, I lose count of how many, how much family I got in Crittenon County. But around Christmas, we got eighty-five in my house, and there are no strangers, I know everyone of them. But bottom line, I'm an elected official. So are you. We have to always keep all disclosures on top of the table so everybody will know. If he's taking that thirty million dollars and his Bahamas with it, we pass it, that's fine. But please, get the lease, get the agreements out before we start early voting June thirtieth, so everybody will at least know where you're spending this month.
And that's what we're doing right now. We're doing exactly what you're saying, Tracy, and I agree with you a hundred percent, and we are working, say, we, on the legal end of it, Joe was working overtime, trying to put this thing together, and you need to understand, I know everybody doesn't understand all the moving parts of it, but I'm telling you right now, Jan Thomas, which has been over this bankruptcy, has been a lifesaver for this county, because he has worked and worked and worked with the county to do everything he could to help us move forward. Jan Thomas is the one that found out about this gentleman, not me. I, I don't take any credit for finding out about their company. Jan Thomas found these people and brought them to us. This is after we had used up what we thought was every avenue that we possibly could, could use. And so, from the legal standpoint of it, my hat's off to Joe also, because Joe has spent hours after hours after hours trying to make sure we get this thing right. And I'm ready for this thing to move forward and us have our hospital back in this community.
How many hospitals? Right now, we've got five. We've had as many as thirteen at one given time. Two thousand and thirteen, the federal tax has changed, capital gains tax, so we quite frankly sold a lot of our hospitals because of capital gains went up, I think it was thirty-three percent or something like that. That said, we've got five right now.
What happened to the hospital that you sold? What has happened to the hospital that you sold?
Well, the one in South Austin, Georgia, we sold to the big hospital system there, that's where we started with three doctors, then we sold it, that's a hundred and thirty-five. That hospital's doing quite well, and the people that invested in that hospital did real well. The hospital in Phoenix City that we built, because the prior hospital that the city had closed, the orthopedic group, y'all heard of Dr. Andrews, the renowned orthopedic surgeon? He started over there at that particular club in Georgia, so it's his former orthopedic surgeon that now own and operate that seventy-five head hospital. Morton, Mississippi, hospital that closed for five years, we reopened that, and twenty, about twenty years later today, it's still open. Newton, Mississippi, another hospital outside Meridian, it had been closed, we reopened it, it's now still operated by the hospital there out of Meridian, so. It's the only one that, that I was involved in, that we couldn't, I kicked, I was brought in sixty days before hospital in Thomasville, Alabama. I went there within forty-eight hours, I knew I couldn't pull that puppy, I was too far gone, told the owner, said, I'm sorry, can't save it, and she, when she filed bankruptcy, they have the market in the city, physicians committee there, they're about to break that new hospital.
Please begin the mic, somebody's chatting, I don't care. Anybody else gonna call you?
First of all, I talked to an insurance guy that does a lot of Obamacare, and he said when Crittenon closed, there was over ten thousand uninsured residents in Crittenon County.
Now there's about three thousand, because they have got that many signed up. It's paying well, whether you like President Obama or you don't like, whatever, it is paying well. And it is ensuring people that from private insurers could not get insurance. Me being one of them, because my husband had a polyp on his colon that was non-cancerous, they turned us down privately. That's the only thing we had on. So we had to go through an Obamacare program, of course, we're paying, you know, like premium, but I mean, so Cretton County right now is in better shape to pay the hospital. Also, I have a seventy-eight-year-old mother here that if I, you know, I don't want her to die getting across that bridge. And she's having heart problems. And I don't want her to die. And we have a hospital here, we need to support our community. But I mean, I know West Memphis and Marion, we all have our problems and we've had issues and, but when we are hurt, like in the tornado in eighty-six, now this, we usually come together and we care about each other. And we need to support and get our hospital back. And I thank you, Rich Phyllis, for all your work and I thank you and the mayor's friend for coming and giving Cretton County a chance because sometimes our reputation, people don't want to come help us. And right now, we need to, we can prove we can do this, we can do this.
I, if I may, I'd like to applaud the former employee status.
Yeah, we're ready to come home. We want to show the community that we can have a good hospital and employees that were there, we can do a good job and make this community proud. We want that chance.
You said it exactly right, there are more people that are insured today than there were a year ago. And Zappinrod, and I'd say the insurance pays are pretty good, so.
And quickly.
You're getting in a better situation right now for somebody to be able to, whether it's them or whoever it may be, to have an opportunity to be successful. But at the end of the day, I mean, I'm not here to say vote for it, vote for it, whatever. But at the end of the day, once you've heard that information has been shared with you, and there's plenty more discussions that have gone on, this is just not the first one. But once you've heard all that information and you take it home and you discuss it with your family, then maybe you can sit there and say, this is what we need to do? Or you can sit there and say, this is not for us, we don't need that in our community. And we live in, we live in a society today where you get to decide. I don't get to decide, it's you that. So it's it's my responsibility to share the information with you and be honest and upfront with you to make sure you know what you're talking about and what you, what we're talking about. So at the end of the day, you'll know how to make that decision, whether it's a yes vote or whether it's a no vote, you'll know how to make it.
Actually, um, I'm kind of in between on the issue. I'm a younger guy, I know a lot of people are going to look at that. I am forty-five, three-year-old, but, um, you know, I've been in EMS, working in situations like this for about seven years now. I don't lie, I know nothing else, done nothing else. I'm also from Mississippi County, the community, which, uh, Mary's, uh, was so. Dr. Cole over there, I'm glad he was here. He knows my grandfather came to us, who was the radiology director for thirty-five years at the Mississippi County Hospital. I got a, kind of, just kind of, if he could, Dr. Cole, if you'd like to kind of come talk about that a little bit, you know exactly how Mary's happened from two thousand four to two thousand nine and our situation and why they live and what kind of situation they left us in. You're the man with that information. I think a lot of people need to know about that a little bit more and if you would like to provide that. Uh, not only that, but I also noticed that a lot of people used to work at this hospital here for many, many, many years. Take a lot of pride in that, don't you? A lot of pride in that. And everybody feels very strongly about that. My grandfather felt the same way. He was, he moved there whenever he was in new radiology, in new radiology day. Uh, he grew with that hospital, both those hospitals, up into the radiology director position for about thirty, thirty-five years. When Ameris came in, they took his position because of how long he'd been there, he's senior. This is a man who's been working in that community for thirty-five years, had retirement, had invested. Everything else, his whole life. My grandfather, I know this personally, talked to him every day, was actually just on the phone with him a little bit ago. Everybody says, I'm, I'm, everybody says they want their job back and unfortunately, people are not going to get their job back, no matter how long you've been here, no matter how long dedicated to this job, they're not going to get that back most likely because look what the services are going to provide. An E R., support for the E R., and eight beds and two surgical rooms?
And radiology.
That's it, that's all. So if, you know, I mean, I want you to kind of just consider that too, I want the community to consider that as well, that, you know, this possibly, this company's not going to look at how long you've been here and say that, well, you need to be compensated for how long, how much experience you have. I think that's an issue and I think some people need to realize that, I mean, because I'd be concerned too, putting in that long of a service and then just kind of be let go like that.
You didn't realize that a hospital is nothing right now.
I understand that. I understand, I I do, I do understand that also and I understand people are going to be expecting their job and they're not going to get their job.
We all understand that.
I've been there.
I was an employee here for twenty-nine years.
Twenty-one.
I've got a job now, I'm happy at my job now. But I'm not here because I'm looking for a job. I'm here because I want a hospital. That I I want to know that I don't have to.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But I also want you to think about this too. This hospital here is not going to have the capabilities, just like her.
It's going to have a capability.
The alternative, what's the alternative?
I I would just like to speak, I really would.
You may speak here.
Okay, that's why I'm here, because I'm a citizen. But the thing about it is, is I want people to understand these capabilities. Hudson's right, we do some magical stuff out there and he himself does some magical stuff. And I applaud him for that. He does. And that's what we do, is we get people where they need to go. Somebody in a cardiac unit does not necessarily need to be at this hospital most likely because they're not going to be able to strictly manage that patient. Same thing with neuro, same thing with trauma, same thing with pediatrics.
But how can you stabilize?
You can stabilize.
Exactly. You're not able to transport, but you're also delaying care. You're delaying care for a ten-minute ride.
Ten minutes, knock down when the bridge is closed.
Okay, let's look at that.
You should know, you said in traffic, don't you?
Yep, let's look at that. The bridge situation, I do believe that we said that we're going to have emergency access and pay some new bridge closures, correct? For fifty-five, I understand, the bridge is not going to be worked on itself, it's just an interchange. I think it's a political thing that we can give that delay to be open strictly for emergency vehicles out of the channel.
Can I say one thing about our hospital? Okay, I think everybody in this ring knows, hey, out of here for this hospital, we have, we have lost one of the best physicians in this community, which is Dr. Trent Fears.
Good son, man. What the fuck, you back to order? Matt? Matt? You know, wait, hang on just a second. You know you and I have had these discussions and I, and I will tell you real quick, I value your opinion just like I do everybody else. That's the reason why we're here. People tell their concerns and your voice makes just as much as, as anybody else does. And I appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, that's, that's what we're here for.
Let me ask you about Americans, about Americans. My experience with Americans and this man right here. Badger's Hospital used to be one of the two hospitals in Mississippi County. We were told in August that we were going to be closed on October third, okay? I contacted a man in Ameris who is deceased now. And they came to our rescue, kept our hospital open, kept the Blahville Hospital open. Now, there are people that give Ameris a bad name in Mississippi County. Let me give you some numbers. When Ameris came, hospital was about to close in Ocelle, hospital was about to close in Blahville. At the end of what, five years, six years? The only outstanding debt that Ameris said was two hundred and fifty thousand dollar utility bill in Ocelle. And they did not owe one penny to the city of Blahville. They asked the county court to put up four hundred thousand dollars to put a roof on the Blahville Hospital. They did not. Ameris was asked to leave. They hired a group out of Nashville, Tennessee, in the next eighteen months, put up one point eight million dollars to keep those hospitals open. Now, that irritates me. That irritates me because, and I'm a loyal guy, if you come in and help me, I'm going to stick with you tomorrow. They ran Ameris off and I think it was fluke, I think it had anything to do with money, I think it was fluke. And 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 that's bad that in my county politics, we pull against one another. We're going to end up losing both hospitals. But Ameris came in and saved us, it cost us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since then, it's cost one point eight million. That's the reason I called this man and these people are together to save your hospital. How many other people have been coming in and doing that?
Thank you, Dr. Cole. Anybody else have any other questions that they would like to ask at this time? If not, I want to say thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to be here tonight. Please go home and talk to your family members about what we discussed tonight and let your heart lead you in the right direction. Thank you.